Vicky Mataro. I see her. Rhonda Holden.
Here.
Carrie Barr.
Here.
Mandy Olson.
Here.
Michelle World.
Here.
Jason Adler. Lisa Potter. She's on there. And then if there's anyone else that's on that I did not call. Sorry, I'm here.
Did you get an answer from Scott? Scott Orlando.
From who? I'm sorry. I did not.
Okay. Thank you, Mandy.
He's online, but he's having troubles with audio.
All right. So, second item is the approval of the agenda. Any items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I can't. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And then consent agenda. Minutes from the last special board meeting and the last board meeting. Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Matt approved.
This is Carrie. I second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. We're going to skip to item five, reports and dashboards. First up is quality. And Mandy Olson, Director of Quality Improvement.
Hello.
Hi, Mandy.
I'm sorry. I have a dog that's... When I said here, I thought people are here and so it's barking and I'm... Hopefully she'll be quiet now. I don't really have anything to add. We did postpone the QI council meeting until May. So we'll have two back-to-back coming up. And then I'm trying to look at my QI council dashboard here. And I don't really have a ton to add. This is our second time with this new dashboard. Let's rotate view. I'm used to having my paper in front of me, so I'm adjusting a little bit. So I'll just talk quickly about the sepsis bundle. There was one failure, but no bad outcome with that. Still a very good outcome. Just want to point out also, the median time to TPA that's on our dashboard actually includes all of our stroke patients. Even if that time would... It wouldn't be counted because of extraordinary things that happened. Like, for instance, that time there of 82 minutes includes a patient whose blood pressure made it so that they had to delay giving TPA until they could get that blood pressure under control. That actually makes it fall out of the measure of what we report nationally. But we include that data here on this dashboard. So we're doing really well despite that that looks like it's over our target. But that's the way that the emergency department teams want to look at that data to make sure that they're keeping track of how long it really is taking, even if they have reasons why it might need to be a little longer than usual. Then going on from there, we've got the restraints. We're at 100%, which is great this month. Jeff Holden has been doing a little bit of different things with his audits. And they've been working on some of the ways they can put the order in Cerner. But I think this has a little bit to do with the way he's auditing right now that's slightly different. So, great job to the team on that. No falls, which is always great. I don't have the needle sticks or hospital-acquired infections data at this point. It's kind of been put on the back burner as Julie Hershey has been out and we've been focused on coronavirus. But Julie Hershey is back and we're getting caught up with that data. Let's see, any other thing else I would like to focus on?
Mandy, I have a quick question for you, if that's all right.
Yeah.
So, is this how workplace violence events are usually calculated per 100 FTEs? Is that why we're using that instead of just a flat number, a regular number?
That is the way that OSHA recommends doing it. And that is also how the Washington Rural Health Collaborative that we participate in, their quality improvement team has decided to collect it. We're looking at if we can get a benchmark for that because it is OSHA. It's nationally recognized way to measure that so that we could see if that... Kind of what a benchmark might be.
Yeah, I'm curious about that because obviously our goal is zero, but I would like to know how we stack up against other places.
Exactly. Yeah, so Amy Diaz was working on that after our data share a week before last. Looking at, it's a national database where we put the Washington Rural Health Collaborative data in. So they do often have a national benchmark.
Okay. Well, at some point when you have that, I'd be happy to see it. Thank you.
Cool.
Mandy question?
Yeah.
So on your CT and MRI times, we've got time to exam and time to results. You know, like 60 minutes after the exam, we're seeing the results. Is that because a different person does the exam than the person who reads the results? Or is it the same person?
No, the time to exam means the time that it takes for them to, when they're in the building, to then get physically into like the CT scanner, on the scanner and having the exam done. The time to read is, yeah, when the radiologist reads it and reports it.
And is the radiologist different than the person that did the exam, ran the machine, or is it the same person?
Yes. Yeah, we have technologists who do that, techs.
And are they onsite or are they remote?
Our techs or the radiologist?
The radiologist.
We do have, I could let Rhonda talk about that, but Dr. Jensen did just start this week in-house, but he's not here 24/7.
I guess my main question is, why is it taking an hour to read the results after the exam is done? That's my question.
Well, it depends on a lot of different things. Sometimes it's how many other reads are in the queue. We had had some issues in the past with the way that the information, the scan was being transferred or the interfaces. So I don't know, Rhonda, if you want to add anything to that.
Well, depending on the study being done, reading an MRI can involve looking at literally hundreds of images in fairly granular detail. So it's not a quick process. An hour turnaround from the time the exam is completed to the time a dictated report is available is pretty impressive. Okay, so I guess the summary is, there's not some delay. It just depends how complicated the read is. And I guess if I go back to September, it looked like it was five or 10 minutes after the exam. And then we jumped to about 60 minutes. And that was my curiosity, since it's obviously not an area I work in. Why suddenly did we spike so much? But again, if it's not any sort of inherent delay, it's just the process, that's great. So I'm just curious. My question is, I've never seen a radiologist take five minutes on an MRI. Well, are you seeing the graph here? I'm just reading the graph. From September, it's showing approximately 20 minutes to the exam and less than 30 minutes when the results are read. So that's why I'm asking, is we saw a huge variance for that chunk of time. And I just was curious what it really meant.
Actually, it's, that's not a lot of variance per se in diagnostic exam reading. It depends on, like Dr. Martin said, the exam. We have a goal with our radiology, radiologists, I think that there's an average. So that's what you're looking for is the average for their turnaround time. The other part is, it depends on how many previous exams they have too that we can compare them to. Some people have none and some people have some that, you know, a few that you could look at to see if this is a chronic thing or if this is something acute. Also, there are times when things are very obvious, right? When you're looking at a scan and you're like, oh my God, there's a bleed there. So that can make it, I would think, a bit faster than if it's, like Dr. Martin said, an MRI where you're having to go through lots and lots and lots of information to get that final read.
And John, I wasn't looking at the graph, but it, those are going to be mostly CTs, which are quicker to read. So the variance is going to be more of the time that it's spent in the queue. And that's one of the reasons we've been pushing Onrad to get Dr. Jensen here. Perfect. All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate the info.
Yeah. Are questions on... I went in the wrong direction. The QI council dashboard.
Thank you, Mandy.
Yeah.
Is Scott on now?
I'll go find him.
Okay.
Don't get near him. Hey, while we have this...
I hear coughing from the next room.
Yeah. Do you remember what day in May we were having the QI council meeting, Mandy or Mandy?
I haven't set it up yet.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks.
Yeah.
Excuse me. I don't know what's going on. My phone was not working. So I'm in Julie's office now.
All right, so Scott, we're on finance.
You're on finance.
Yep. I know. We've got lots to talk about.
Okay, the, as I noted, the first three weeks of March were very, very good. And then the things with the governor's order on elective, limited elective surgeries, our revenue dropped off significantly and it impacted volume in the clinics. It impacted volume in the emergency department. We had just a very, very large decrease in revenue that caught us. I guess it wasn't a surprise, but it was of greater magnitude than I expected. I think the, the report speaks for itself. I would like to make just a bit of an update under bullet three on deductions. I made the comment that, that the number of requests for financial assistance really hadn't changed. And when I had, when I wrote this, that was accurate. We're starting to get more requests for financial assistance now, which is not unexpected. And we also, we've put up on our website a letter that addresses some of the steps we're doing. John Ward helped, did some editing with that and Matt also. So that is up on our webpage and we are directing patients to call and work. We'll work with them on either payment plans or financial assistance. And we've also communicated with our, the collecting agencies, those collections, to not take any actions with regards to wage garnishments or things of that nature during this time. So that is an update with that. The, the, I will say on the balance sheet, which is the strength of the organization, continues to be very, very good. As of, our cash is, continues to be very strong. Our AR has, since the, this report was written, our AR has decreased another $3.3 million. And we're on pace excluding the money that we receive from the feds to collect about $8.1 million if we collect at the same rate for the last few days of April. The, some other, another positive related to our finances is the increase in payer mix. On page 22, we were about 34.77% commercial in year-to-date through February. We're up to 35.32, which means that we're recovering a little bit more on each account that we are collecting on because of that increase in payer mix. The, on the P and L on page 23, with a decrease in revenue of $1.8 million that we, we ended up with an operating loss of $813,000 and, which is significant. Just the, from the P and L perspective, it's a quite an ugly profit-loss statement. And, but again, the strength of the organization currently is with our balance sheet. And we are in, we have a very, very good balance sheet and good cash reserves currently. Questions about the financial statement?
I have a quick question, but I think it's for Dr. Martin. What explains the drop in ER visits? Is it that people aren't going out and doing dangerous stuff and they're just sitting at home?
There's, it's been seen nationwide. There was actually a piece in the Seattle Times over the weekend about where are all the heart attacks and the strokes going? Anecdotally, talking with Marty Brugman, who's the CMO at Virginia Mason Memorial, they actually are seeing a significant uptick in the number of ruptured appendices that they're operating on, which basically translates to folks are trying very hard not to go to the hospital. And they're staying home when they probably should be coming in.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott, on that fifth bullet statement, it says salaries were over budget by $189,000. Was that because of like ENT? What's the, why are we running a little high?
ENT was a factor. The other, the other factor related to it was some of the, the, we've been paying a premium for individuals that have been working in the COVID clinic. And so that, that was a factor also.
Yep.
Hi, this is Carrie. I got just a quick question. It's mostly probably nonsense, but I see on this, there we still are having about $35,000, $36,000 in travel and education. I anticipate that's mostly education and not travel?
I can't, I can't, I didn't look at that specifically, but I would say it's probably mostly education. There was, there was, we were operating fairly normally before for most months. And so there was some travel that did occur. And, but going forward, there will likely be very little travel. There will be, there'll, there'll be ongoing education of some sort. But if it does occur, will likely be close to home and, and, you know, much less than we had budgeted.
Yeah, that, to me, that's just something that I could see that somebody would question. Why are you traveling when we're supposed to be socially distancing? It's like, no, that's all education. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else related to these financials?
So AR days are still at what they...
The way, the way, the way the calculation worked for the month is they were unchanged at 84 days in accounts receivable. However, that said, the AR actually decreased by $1.7 million. But the factor that we had less revenue to factor in, so it, the days in AR remain same. But we made good progress reducing the overall AR by 1.7 million. And since, since then, we've reduced it another $3.2, $3.3 million as of today.
Okay.
The next item that I have in, in the report is a term sheet from Cashmere Valley Bank. And this is the line of credit that they have offered for, it's a $5 million line of credit. There is, Mandy sent out a revised resolution that you'll need to hopefully approve later that basically mirrors the terms that were mentioned in this, in this term sheet. There was some discussion between the bank attorney and our attorney about it, but making some minor tweaks with, with regards to make sure that this document agrees with our other loan covenants. But would hope that you would consider approving that, that credit line. We don't have an immediate need to use it. It will not be available till, till May if it's approved. The bank has to get it passed on their end. But if, if you vote to approve that line of credit, then we would have access to an additional $5 million in funds to help with some of our liquidity.
And Scott, just to confirm, if we never use it, it doesn't cost us anything? There's no fees to set this up or?
That is correct. The bullet on, bullet number nine says on the term sheet, there, there is no fee due to the bank. So that is correct.
Okay. Which is great because typically there's a setup fee and then typically you're paying a little bit higher interest. And we're not on either. So you can't lose.
I will say, just a compliment to Cashmere Bank. They don't, they don't do a lot of lending to healthcare facilities. And so this is, they, you know, we've had a long-term relationship with the bank. And, but they, they, they did this quickly. And they, it's honestly outside of their comfort area to, to, to make significant loans to healthcare facilities. But Tom Brown, the maker that I'm working with, he's, he's been a quick study in healthcare and issues related to hospitals and risks and upside potential. So this was, as we stepped up to help us with this.
And Scott, on 6A of the term sheet, the interest rate?
Yes.
It says it's variable at prime plus 25. Is, does it become locked? Like if you go ahead and use this, it's, it's the prime plus 25 and then that's locked and it becomes a fixed rate? Or is it variable through the term of the loan where three years from now it could be a 10% rate?
It's variable through the term of the loan. The one, the one catch with that would be is that there's a provision that we have to rest the loan, rest the loan for 30 days. So we would have to pay it off at some point. And so, and so if we paid it off and then went back at, then it would, it would be variable when, for the, for the rate that the money that's being borrowed for.
And how often is that rate adjusted?
I believe it's...
An annual adjustment?
No, it's more often than that. I don't know how often, it's not clear what, to me, it's based on, on the 6A it just talks about. It's, it's set based on the Wall Street US prime rate. That's probably daily. It may, it may fluctuate daily, although interest money is pretty cheap right now and probably will be for the...
And if we do use this money, there's no early pay penalty?
No, it's...
Pay it off anytime. Okay.
We can pay it off through operating line.
Yep.
Thanks.
The other thing that I'd just like to mention while I have you is that we have, we're in the process of completing our annual audit with DZA. I had a video off, meeting with them this afternoon. I think we are on schedule to have the audit presentation done next at the board meeting. It will likely be remote. What I had, typically they have come and presented in person. And so to avoid two trips down here, we had, we had moved the finance committee to the same day as the board meeting. It was to three, three o'clock at, on the 28th. I will probably move that back to the 26th and, and have the presentation remotely to the finance committee. And then a, another subsequent presentation to the, to the board at a more summary level, if that's all right.
Yeah.
Okay. The, we had, after the term sheet, we had the Mitchell's report about grants. And we're investigating a grant with the federal communications about, to help offset some of the costs we've had with developing telemedicine. And they're, they're looking for other grant opportunities also.
I have a quick question. I think it's for Mandy Weed. How do we need to sign these resolutions? Do we just do it when we come back? Do we have to do it electronically? Or is this assumed just to be good enough?
Well, I am not sure about that. I was thinking we'd sign it when we came back. But Scott was saying if the resolution today is passed, he will need it signed fairly soon, it sounds like. So I can scan it and each of you can sign it and email it back. Or we can meet out in the parking lot and get it signed or however you guys would like to do it.
All right, well, just let us know. You can put it on a tree stump somewhere and just tell...
Mandy, do you use, does the hospital use DocuSign? Which is used for a lot of real estate transactions these days.
I don't believe we have one set up for the hospital, do we, Scott?
We don't, we don't use it. And I think, I don't think that will work for this document.
Thank you.
All right, well, just let us know.
Then the other, the other, if, if there's no questions about the upcoming audit presentation and the finances, then there are some capital, a capital item that we have asked for.
So just, just so everybody knows, in our finance meeting, we decided to move away from the automatic door opener request for the time being, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're just down to the telephone, the voice-over IP system?
Correct for Cleellen.
Yeah. So the finance committee supported that request after a discussion.
Are there any question? Do you want to talk about a little bit, Scott, or?
Well, the individual that couldn't get his phone to work for Zoom, maybe probably not the person you want addressing telephone communication challenges, but...
Maybe Carrie Barr could speak to the need.
I can. I just unmuted myself. So, yes, I'm, I would be very excited to have this approved. This is incredibly old technology to the point where we are, we are purchasing phones off of Craigslist. There'd be, and I wish I was joking, like this is, they just don't make these phones anymore. It is, I just, Amanda, Scott and I just tried to talk with Stephanie and she, and her phone kept cutting out. She wasn't able to connect with Zoom and it's literally just hanging on with a, with a cable wire. And so this is, this is a huge need for them. It's also been a patient satisfaction issue. Not only are external customers or our patients who are trying to get ahold of us, phones are dropping or it goes straight to voicemail. It doesn't even ring. And then our internal customers, so our KBH employees, so we have, like MedSearch will try to get ahold of us and say, hey, I have a patient that's discharging today and would, would love to get a follow-up appointment before they head out. I've had them stop in the hallways and ask for cell phone numbers. So all of the providers have provided cell phone numbers, their own personal cell phone numbers. And then they'll hand a personal cell phone number over to the receptionist so that they can get appointments scheduled. So this is, this is the state of affairs as it sits right now. So...
And Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong. This was, this is Michelle here. This was also identified through one of our PFAC meetings, especially from our upper county.
Especially from our upper county residents as a need up there for all the reasons that you just explained.
I don't remember. I don't recall it being brought up at a PFAC, but I know I've answered many Verge reports on it.
It's a pretty sophisticated system. The void. I mean, it's it can do a lot. And there's a little bit of training that goes goes into it, but everyone's happy with it.
It's the same system that we have at the MAC right now, which was which has been it's been slick and yeah.
Okay, so do we have someone that wants to generate a motion?
So I will move to approve this expenditure. I'm loathe to do it in this financial times, but per discussion of the finance committee, it's really, really urgent and will serve a purpose of communication during this challenging time also. So I move to approve this expenditure.
Second from Erica.
A motion from John, second from Erica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed?
Thank you.
Can you get the resolution approved, please?
Oh, I did not. The other
Oh, yeah.
Resolution, we need to have that approved also. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah. So we do need a motion for the line of credit.
Yeah, I forgot about that $5 million.
So we need a resolution to generate a line of credit of $5 million.
All right, I'll I'll move to approve resolution 20 dash 20.
This is Terry. Oh, you're you beat me. All right.
Anyway, anybody, go ahead, Terry.
All right.
I just
Go ahead, Terry. I mean, go ahead.
It's 20 dash oh two. This 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 document that was that was just a typo in the air. They had on the on page 32, it's 20 dash oh two. On page 33, it's 20 dash 20, but the correct number is actually 20 dash oh two. And that and the document I think I think that Mandy sent out today is the is numbered correctly.
Okay, I will send my previous motion and I'll move to approve resolution number 20 dash zero two.
Got a second?
Go ahead, Terry.
Terry, I'll second it.
So for discussion, I personally like resolution 2020, but
And he'll do all if you push him.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
You can have my seat and I'll take that.
Okay.
18 more resolutions, Bob, and you'll be there.
So we don't. Let's hope we don't need 18 more infusions of $5 million.
Yeah. Okay. Julie?
Yeah, so
Operations?
Just kind of got a combined report from us. There are several updates that I'd like to provide. Initially, as we entered into this, our surge planning, we had contracted for 24 seven security with Phoenix Security. It was it was a kind of an emergency contract that we did with them. So it was at a very expensive rate. It is also something that Scott is going to be applying to FEMA for reimbursement on. Based on where we're at right now and the lobbying that I'm getting from everybody, from the House Supervisor to the ED staff and and Ellensburg Police Department. I have asked Scott to find in our budget a place to continue security through the end of the year. In I DeeDee is working with Ron and the ED staff and Micah Bruner, and they do not think 24 hours a day is necessary. They're looking at something like 3pm to 3am that we would be covered seven days a week instead. So the total cost from May 1 through the end of the year will be $91,000. And again, Scott's going to continue to apply for FEMA funds for that. So there's been a call over the years for security. I had a feeling when we pulled the trigger on this, it was going to be I'm mixing metaphors, but it was going to be really hard to unring this bell. We've had a couple of situations where I think it's fair to say the security personnel in the emergency department have been instrumental in in deescalating situations just in the month that they've been here. And everyone seems really pleased with the quality and and the character of the folks that Phoenix has been supplying to us. So so there is that. Does any anybody have any comments on that or from operations? Anybody here? Anything else? Okay. Um, I we held and I held Amanda, Mandy and I held an electronic employee form on Tuesday, had an opportunity to talk to the staff and and Michelle tells me we're up to 527 people have viewed the electronic form so far. So it had a pretty good reach. But we updated them on the financial condition of the organization and I think we were very candid with them about what was happening on the operations side, but then also as Scott pointed out, what the strength of our balance sheet is. We have we have asked them for voluntary reductions for for pay periods beginning May 10, ending July 4. Amanda sends and I'll I'll ask her to to chime in here. We gave them a number of different levers to work with. The contracts with Teamsters and WSNA has things like low census and and time without pay. We are exempt personnel will be looking to contribute time without pay or use their PTO. Those have different results on the financial statements, but they're they both contribute. Our providers, we have asked our physicians rather, who do not accrue PTO or vacation time. We have asked to forego their pension contribution. So we've laid out a number of different ways that people can help. And I to say that it was well received, I think, is that is really an understatement. The team is very much on board. I told them at that time that from this coming pace period, so April 26 through July 18, that I would be taking a 20% cut in pay. We are also going to our vendors, the Cerner's, the GE's, the Press Ganey's, the folks we write big checks to. And we are asking them for a 10% credit for May, June and July as well. Scott is talking to our bondholders about delaying the interest payment that we have coming up in June. So I think talking to the employees about what we were asking others for was helpful as well. We weren't just going to the employees. So after that, we had great participation and great questions coming back and forth. Today, Amanda and I met with Teamsters. Tomorrow, we will meet with WSNA. Teamsters was very appreciative of the communication, and I think that's what he called out was he doesn't represent Yakima Memorial, but that's what they're hearing is that people are just really anxious because of the level of communication. So more is better. People like the transparency and they frankly like the options. So Amanda, anything you want to add or?
Yeah, so I made a comment, actually an instant command after that. I've never been thanked so many times as an HR director for delivering difficult news and I think it just really shows KBH, our employees get it. They're they're hearing it anyway, and we've made a big difference by allowing some options and choice and involving them in the process when they're hearing all all over what what other hospitals are going towards. So we're hearing that the transparent communication is is really helpful and the options for staff. We have had a lot of people asking questions since on on what they can do and what their options are and how they can do their part. So we don't think this is just going to be a few departments carry carrying the weight with this contribution. We are getting a lot of commitment, at least initially as people are exploring their options. And yeah, as Julie said, the the relationships with the union and the partnerships that we've built previously have really helped us have that foundation. So we're very thankful for that. We are working on some packet materials to deliver to the directors meeting on Monday that will outline FAQs. It'll outline different codes people can use. It'll outline a form that people can use to 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 commit to what they're contributing. And so we we're working on getting all those materials ready, but we we're getting a lot of good support.
Oh, this is Terry. I I reviewed that that meeting just to watch it to kind of see the response from the employees and it was very positive. Even though the news is kind of scary and stuff like that, I was really impressed how the input from the employees were very positive and you guys did a wonderful job promoting that and answering the questions. I don't think anybody went away from that meeting without a positive idea that we have a plan. We are planning our future, not reacting to our future. So that is that is really wonderful. Thank you for a great meeting.
Thank you.
So have you had and have you had folks already like of the option say, hey, this is what I want to do this?
Yeah, actually.
And what are the choose?
Yeah. So, um, you know, people, I think I was a little surprised at how many people were interested. So we talked about using PTO. So using PTO banks unpaid time and and foregoing the pension temporarily. And I am surprised at a little bit more of how many employees are interested in the in the pension option as well. So they've asked some questions on that. But really, we've had consistency across the board. What we've really emphasized and I think what KBH recognizes is that everyone's situation is different. Some people might have a huge bank of PTO that they aren't going to be able to use this year. So that's an easier option for them. For people like me who are pretty new to the organization, I don't really have a lot of PTO, so I plan to take some unpaid time. And so really, it's it just is dependent on each person and where that they're at, but we are getting pretty consistent commitment across the organization.
And I, you know, there's a there's a real interest in time off without pay as well. And I think that we we really leading with this commitment to keep people's benefits full. And there's one of the questions that we got was about allowing people to go on unemployment instead, since there are some unemployment kickers. And one of the things we really want to emphasize with our employees is that we were we want to keep control of the impact that this this cost savings has on our employees. And once you pull the trigger and lay someone off or they choose to be laid off so they can get unemployment, to a certain extent, you you lose control of what happens. Through the contracts, we lose control because contract personnel, there's bumping provisions and things like that. So so again, trying to manage it internally so that people had all the options that they needed was where we were trying to go with this. We are looking for a $2 million savings. So so that's going to that's going to be some work to get $2 million out of for pay period. But we hope to get there. And that is we we picked that number essentially because that will make payroll. And while it's not a really a cash question at this point, we did want people to understand that there was a reason to do. The other thing I wanted to let you know, whether it's WSNA or the meeting we had with Teamsters today, we also told them we are going to start researching our layoff language, furlough language in the contracts. That doesn't, but there are time commitments we have in there. We have to give 30 days notice. We have to create the lists and things like that. We are going to prepare for that. And we didn't want to surprise them or or have them think that that signaled a change in her intent. But as we get closer to that July 4 date or when we're out of our voluntary timeframe here, if we go to a voluntary situation, we're going to have to teed that up 30 days ahead of time. So we'll manage it very carefully going forward and we will let WSNA know that that's that's out there as well. Any other questions about about that? One of the and I would like Mandy Olson to talk about this somewhere in the report, but also in the electronic form that we had on Tuesday. We signaled sort of the the new approach to masking in the organization, which is if you share your space, cover your face. So we want people, it has to rhyme or I can't remember the rule. So we want people, if you're behind a nurse's station or registration, if you're in the hall going to the cafeteria, anytime you cannot own that six foot radius, we want you to be wearing a mask. And I'll we held the forum on Tuesday and Wednesday morning. I it was a tremendous uptick in the number of people wearing masks. So Mandy, do you have anything?
Well, I just I would add that it's even more than just when you share your space. So what the CDC has gone to, what DOH started talking about this week, and I did get an answer from Dr. Larson, I think just yesterday, that he would like us to move towards anytime you're in the facility at all, wearing a mask. So things are progressing, they're changing, and we're keeping adjusting as it as it goes. But yeah, it was a little bit of a preview in our forum that that this is continued. So U Dub is moving to universal masking is one way to call it, but on April 27, anytime you go into a U Dub facility and you're in public spaces, you have to have a mask on or a cloth face covering. So we're we're starting to talk about how we will advance that a little further even than even if I I'm sharing my space, you know, if I'm in a hallway. And we had started modeling that already this week, but we'll be going even a little further with that. So.
So Julie, just to go back for one second. I mean, I appreciate the the work on the masking and stuff like that, too. But talking about furloughs and things like that, I know that you that you guys are starting to think about if the governor's order, you know, if if May 18, if you start to be able to do some elective surgeries again and things like that. And I know it's hard to predict anything, so I'm not really asking for a prediction. I guess I'm wondering what the chances are that we wouldn't have to do furloughs. Are we already deep enough into it that this is going to have to happen anyway? Or is there a way if if we can sort of start gaining elective surgeries back and things like that? Is there a way that we're going to be able to pull out of this?
Yeah. Yeah. And and so I would say I am not I'm not betting on having to go to layoffs or furloughs. I think that and I and what we told the staff on Tuesday, and I just fundamentally believe this. This is so much bigger than us and we are so much better positioned than most other hospitals. If if we are not back into a more routine hospital situation by the beginning of July, the federal government, the country has to have a solution. So if we are still operating on, you know, this kind of revenue, we're we're going to be under budget five and a half to $6 million in April. If we are, if the hospital industry is still doing that, two dozen hospitals in Washington State will be closed. I that's so. So I don't think we're going to get there, but the fact of the matter is, when you look at our contracts, we have to give 30 days notice or 45 days notice. We want to know what that is. We want to be prepared for it. And just because of the universal and catastrophic nature of this, I don't think we're going to get there.
Yeah. I mean, I appreciate your planning and and I think all of us appreciate the work you've been doing with the employees. It sounds like they appreciate that, too. And so I I like how this has gone so far. I was just kind of curious. I I know you got to be prepared. I was just curious about how how deep we were in already.
So so and I asked Scott to stop saying this out loud, but our cash position has actually improved since this began because of that AR that was hanging out there and his folks have just become just animals about collecting on accounts receivable. They've they've really started all that work that they were doing in the fourth quarter of 19 has really resulted in an uptick in cash coming through the door. It is June and July where we're going to start feeling the shortfall in collections because of the dramatic decrease in revenues. So it takes us 45 days to get paid by Medicare and Medicaid. So it takes us 45 days to get paid by Medicare and Medicaid. So this, so we haven't seen the dramatic fall off in cash yet. And we still have the cushion of, of collecting our existing accounts receivable. So there's a lot of, I, I don't anticipate. I certainly hope that we don't go to a layoff situation, but there are deadlines in order to do that and bumping provisions and notifications that we have to meet if we decide that we have to go that direction. So. But, and Teamsters were not at all surprised by that. And again, you know, we'll let them know. So as it comes out. As far as the elective surgeries are concerned, we're chugging along up until yesterday. The Hospital Association was working closely with Dr. Bono and the Governor's Office to finalize some interpretive guidelines. We are, you know, the, the date we're supposed to go back to being able to do this is May 18th. So that's what Carrie and her folks have sort of been working towards in terms of scheduling. We've been with Amy Krogstad and the surgeons trying to get, you know, people scheduled for their pre-op work and really get, get it in the works so that we can start moving again May. So last night, very late last night, the unions approached the Governor's Office very, very unhappy about that plan. They want to set their own standards. They want the governor to work with the unions to set standards about PPE and having being all green for PPE, which would mean everything was disposable and you didn't have any shortages in PPE. So the Governor's Office sort of threw the flag on this whole interpretive guidelines while they worked through it with the unions. So it may have been a little bit of a case of the unions just wanting to remind the hospitals and the governors that they were players in this too. When I asked on a call today where that friction was, because you're hearing stories about, you know, people being asked to work in unsafe conditions and being asked to work with, I said, who, where is this coming from? And, you know, who's, is there a system and a union or bargaining unit that, that is having these clashes? And, and the Hospital Association said, no, the only issues they have heard like that have all been anecdotal. There was a physician who was let go for, for making some claims about working in unsafe conditions up in Wantcom County, I think it was. But they're going, no, it's not like anybody's picketing at Swedish or people are, it seems to be one offs and anecdotal. So the people are alarmed, I think, at the idea that we'll have to continue to stay surgeries beyond May 18th. But we're going to plow ahead with that as our date. So, right, Carrie?
That's right. And it's actually May 19th. Yeah. So it ends on May 18th and May 19th, those surgeons will start cutting.
Yeah. So we have bored orthopedic surgeons and that is never, ever, ever a good thing. So we need to get them back in the ORs and seeing patients. So we're working on that. But also late last night, HHS came out with the distribution. If you'll recall, we're working from the CARES bill, which had $100 billion for providers. And $30 billion of that was distributed 10 days ago, I think, April 10th. And we got $1.4 million of that. It was based entirely on your proportion of 2019 Medicare claims. So it was a sloppy calculation, but it got cash out the door. So that was $30 billion. The next $20 billion that is just general relief should be out either tomorrow or next week. And this is going to be done, the basis for that is going to be our 2018 net patient services revenue. So the original calculation, because it was made on Medicare and excluded Medicare Advantage, things like major children's hospitals got a $400 check because they didn't care for the Medicare population. So there were clearly some players who were looking for relief that didn't get anything at all. So this second general allocation is intended to take care of some of that. It will be based strictly on net patient revenue and that'll be from 2018. Then there is $10 billion set aside for what they're calling high impact areas. They don't like hotspots as a term. So they will be looking at the places that had the most COVID impact and the longest COVID impact. So they'll go back to April 10th and look at the volumes of COVID-19 patients that were actually served in a variety of areas. And that's $10 billion that will go out. And then there is $10 billion for rural facilities. So our hospital and our rural health clinics will all participate in that $10 billion. So we will get our proportional share of the 20 billion general. A small portion, because we have admitted one COVID-19 patient since April 10th. And so we will get a small portion of that and then we will get our portion of the $10 million in rural relief. The balance of the money is going to the tribal lands, the Indian Health Service, to skilled nursing facilities, and then some other special use Medicaid high utilizers. So, yeah.
Can you confirm for me, you said that we get a small portion because we had one admitted patient after a certain date. Does that change depending on how many patients we have admitted or, or is it a, and any, any gets us whatever the max funds was to be?
I think what the, the intent is, is, and no one really knows this, but when they were talking, it sounded like to me the denominator is going to be the total number of COVID patients. Your portion is going to be however many of those you had. So it, it's not going to be based on our overall occupancy or COVID as a percentage of our overall occupancy. It's, it sounds like that $10 billion is supposed to be specific to the COVID population. That makes sense?
Yes, thank you.
I know that Erica is more plugged in on some of the stuff than I am, so maybe she's heard more than this, but someone said, you know, one of the rumors that I heard was that KBH is inflating the numbers of COVID patients because we get a certain amount per COVID patient. I said, well, if we're inflating it, we're doing a pretty lousy job.
So we're putting back on that multiplier if that's the case.
So anyway, so I had to correct that. I don't know, Erica, if you're hearing anything like that.
The reason I ask, not because I suspect anything with our organization, but there are people speculating that back east that patients are being, COVID is being attributed to patients that maybe have a picture of COVID, even if they're negative for it and they're being chalked up as a COVID patient or a COVID death. And I don't know where this stems from, if there's merit to it or not, but people are concerned that maybe, maybe this number is being inflated so these establishments, these organizations can increase their COVID funding. I know, like Matt said, I mean, we're doing a horrible job if that is the case. And, you know, I appreciate that we're honest and taking care of our community, but I just, I didn't know if there was any merit to that.
Well, all I'll say is I can't imagine the institution that's going to the physicians who are responsible for coding these patients and telling them to, to misrepresent the diagnosis for money. That's simply not the way clinicians work. That, so if you think about that, that who's actually having to commit this fraud and why they would do that, that's simply not the character of, of the folks that take care of patients. So.
Sure. I know that, I want to say New York added a few days ago, their, their numbers ballooned by 3,500. I want to say it was just their deaths that ballooned by 3,500 because they went back and reclassified some of them as suspected cases. I don't know if that affects their funding or not, but it definitely makes the numbers a little more staggering.
Yeah.
Well, the, I think what that reflects is the clinical sense of what this disease looks like and the recognition that we don't know. I've heard people talk about what is the sensitivity and specificity of the testing we have. And the answer is we can't know. Because in order to talk about sensitivity and specificity, it has to be compared to a gold standard. The best test you have is the gold standard. What they're doing in New York is saying that our gold standard, which is PCR, is probably flawed. And when we see a disease of high prevalence and we get a false, and we get a negative test, but it looks like what everyone else is dying from, it's probably what everyone else is dying from.
And I would definitely agree with that. I hear on the regular from some of my nurse friends that they have patients who are testing negative multiple times, serial testing, and then they take them for a bronch and boom, they're positive. Meanwhile, they've, you know, they have not been held in a COVID unit and just getting it everywhere. So it's unfortunate that the tests are not, not a slam dunk.
Great.
Yeah, I think, I was just going to say, I think we're also suffering from some of the political nonsense that's going on out there too. You know, people don't want to see as many COVID cases out there. So that way they are questioning these things, even though we have science and real numbers behind it. So I think the best thing we can do, like Matt was saying, is just be able to tell people, you know, you know, we're doing a poor job inflating these if we're not doing it because that's not really what's going on, you know?
And bear in mind, this is a disease, this is a virus that's been around for four months. So the science is still in its infancy.
And I do know we're fortunate that we have the testing in the state. And so there are states that don't have the tests available. So they're making that determination based on the clinical symptoms, right? So they're, they're, I've, I've heard rumors of that nationally and have been very frustrated actually by those because to me it is, you're saying you've got clinicians committing fraud. But I do know that there, there's challenges in other states where they don't have the same testing capabilities as that's where they can't test. And they're just having to make that determination based on what they saw with the patient.
Yeah, I was reading an article the other day. It was kind of interesting. Once we kind of know how many people really have had COVID-19, that the percentage of death is probably going to go down. It's not quite as high as it is what we do. So, you know, there are other things that are going to come out of this too. But like, like Kevin and Dr. Martin was saying, the science is pretty much in its infancy and we're doing the best we can. And we're not inflating any numbers.
Another thing up until now, I'm not sure I have mentioned, but effective March 30th, we are a 61-bed hospital. So we did get the state's authorization to surge up to 61 beds. So that's in place till June 30th and they will allow us to extend it if we choose to. So also Carrie has been working with the staff at the COVID clinic to, the volumes there are way down, but we really do want to keep that, that service idling. Because as soon as we get, you know, a, a order to do widespread testing or, you know, like other things that public health is asking for from the community, we want to be able to pop that service up again. It's probably going to be more of a parking lot, more of a drive-through thing. If we're doing, you know, just a general population testing there, then, then we won't be doing patient assessments and things like that. So, so real low volume right now. It just kind of keeping the doors open. But I firmly believe there'll be a second wave of needing that for a broader testing sort of philosophy in the community.
That Julie, you had talked about people getting antsy and starting to let their guards down a little bit. There was a big gathering of people outside the courthouse today. People are starting to have yard sales again. So I don't, we were going to do some sort of campaign, I guess, to try to keep people vigilant. Would you say a couple of things about that, please?
Michelle, you want to update?
Yeah, I can, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. And so we started the conversations with public health and very, they very clearly said, yes, we want to be on board with this and they're now taking the lead. So we had a call yesterday between myself, public health and CWU. We have some key talking points that will go to Intimate Command, i.e. Dr. Larson for approval tomorrow. And once we get those key talking points approved from them, then they're turning it over to my team, i.e. Jan. And we'll put some infographics with it and hope with it by early next week, we'll be able to start to get the messaging out. They really felt that the stay home part of the message was starting to fall on deaf ears. And instead of banging their heads against the wall, they really want to focus on the stay safe part of that message of masking, distancing and things like that. So that's where we are and we're just, we fine tuned the points even this afternoon. And it should be going to IC tomorrow morning for approval.
So Julie, since we're now a 60-bed hospital, is there any unintended consequences that will make us no longer a critical access hospital for two months? To mess up any of our federal funding or any nonsense like that?
No, the federal government issued a waiver allowing critical access hospitals to exceed their 25-bed limit. It was actually the state of Washington that said, wait, not so fast. So we had to ask the state independently of that. No, the federal government issued waivers and the state's on board as well.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I didn't want to all of a sudden have Scott have a, have some palpitations because there wasn't the money coming in he was expecting.
I was reading about the extra ventilators that were received from the EOC or by the, through the EOC. And I was wondering, I've been reading about how invasive ventilation is, is falling out of favor, at least except aside from those extreme cases of people having respiratory distress and there's a movement towards BiPAP and other ventilation supplementation and assist. What is our status for BiPAP and other modalities for ventilation support?
That's contrary to what I'm hearing. In fact, it's the opposite of what I'm hearing. The most recent guidance I saw was intubate early. The reason being that non-invasive ventilation aerosolizes the virus particle. And there was some talk that proning prior to intubation may delay intubation, but I haven't seen anything that, that was getting away from invasive ventilation. The one caveat is if you theoretically, if you put a HEPA filter on the exhaust of CPAP or BiPAP, you cut down on the aerosolization. But I haven't seen any data to that effect.
Okay. I was reading that, well, whereas there's the aerosolization issue as far as protecting staff is concerned, that trialing patients on BiPAP was yielding better outcomes. There was the study that came out just yesterday, I think it was released, or a report actually that just came out from New York on 5,700 patients and their vented patients were doing very poorly. It was an 88% mortality rate for vented patients, which has triggered a lot of people to start considering BiPAP and other, other methods. So, I mean, is BiPAP, is that as, as hard, is that such a, a rare resources ventilators or are those kind of more a dime a dozen?
It's more common, it's less effective in ARDS and usually the patients that get ventilated are the patients who failed BiPAP. So I'd have to see the study to see how they controlled for severity of illness. But if you were to tell me that, that more patients died on vents than on BiPAP, I would say that's expected.
Oh, well, for sure. I just, I just try to look down, down the line and see what's maybe coming up, you know, as far as like the medicine shortages that we're facing and stuff like that. It seems that a lot of this stuff starts to peek its head up early and it gains traction. Sometimes, sometimes too late to move on, especially for the little, little folks like us rather than New York City and whatnot.
The flip side is.
Hi Erica. It's Rhonda. I, I think that there have been some studies out there that show that high use of the free flow oxygen is better in an attempt before ventilation. And we do have six BiPAP and six CPAP machines in-house. So we're able to utilize that first, but like Dr. Martin said, the patients that fail that would then be intubated.
For sure. Okay. Thank you.
So now, you know, Erica, I think it always falls into that little thing that we hear. Association does not mean causation. And, you know.
I'm aware how studies work, but thank you for that.
Yeah. Yeah. Because I know Dr. Martin is saying, if you're that sick and you fail everything else, the last straw that we can do is put you on a ventilator. And we're, we may keep you alive for a little bit longer, but then sooner or later it fails. Although unfortunately, there's a lot of people out there doing. unfortunately, there's a lot of people out there doing, understand that, saying that association doesn't mean causation.
My concern stems from people being put on, vented early, because that was the standard. That's what came out of China, was being vented early, finding out that people can tolerate the lower SpO2 for a longer time and aren't having a poor outcome associated with it, so long as they're not in, you know, subjective distress. So anyhow, I just, I don't need to argue the, the granular details of this. Just curious to know, in case it does become the recommendation that BiPAP is, is preferable, and if there's a way to control the increased infection risk to staff, if, if that's something that we'd be able to be nimble about or not.
Yes, I'd love to see the study.
The other thing, and then I think I'm done. We did do a tabletop exercise today with our skilled nursing and assisted livings and EOC. So we'll have a hot wash tomorrow, I think, at 10:30. We're going to go through and, and see how that went. But it involves Central Washington University as the alternative care facility, and then the assisted livings really trying to manage as much of the disease, assisted living and nursing home managing as much of the diseases they could. One of the things that got my attention is there seems to be a lot of these facilities that are looking to rely on our GNP program to help care for the patients that are going to be in their facility. So I think we've already identified that we're going to need to sit down and talk about how we can augment our GNP staff. So any other comments from the, from the exercise today? Either Rhonda or Vicky or Dr. Martin? Nope. Okay.
So can we have a couple of questions on your report, Julie? So on the PPE supply chain. So tell me that where we are with that, if we don't have a secure?
So, so I would say at the beginning of the month, we were in much, and chime in, Mandy, I know you've had your, your finger on this. We were in much worse shape when it came to PPE than we are right now. The issue with that is we've had some great, great contributions from the EOC, the Washington State Hospital Association acquired some. So they have, this PPE has come to us through non-traditional channels. I'm hearing a lot less sort of urgency in the conversation about PPE from hospitals, but no one is getting their regular allotment. No one's getting 100% of what they order from their existing vendors. This is coming through emergency channels, through FEMA. They're going out and scouring the market for gowns and masks. So the supply chain itself is still in disarray. So it's great to have, you know, I wouldn't care if we had two days PPE on hand if I got exactly what I needed every day. We are at 30 days plus of surge utilization, surge need right now. But we are still, you know, out there like little bandits and pirates, getting PPE from every, everywhere we can. And Morgan asked the question today at Incident Command about when she should sort of take her foot off the gas in acquiring PPE. And we all, I think universally, said, no, this is, keep, keep getting PPE from whatever source she can possibly get it from. She's concerned about storage. We may pop up a pod or something to store this in. But we're, we are not out of the woods. You know, the Department of Health is already saying that they're anticipating next winter, they're going to have a surge at least as big as the one that they had this year. So this is going to be with us for a while. And so she's out there making deals for PPE.
Just offhandedly, I want to mention that yesterday on the national NPR program, Cassie Sauer was, was on a story about how Wishu was importing masks from China. That is not what they typically do. But anyway, you should check it out. It's pretty.
Out, you know, they're out of Boeing Field, and the Boeing volunteer pilots were flying into rural hospitals all over the state and stuff. It's, it's all hands on deck kind of process right now. So did that answer your question, Bob?
Yeah.
It's not a matter of filling out a PO and getting what you order. So.
Is it thought that, I, I know that the bulk of, well, everything comes from China, it seems. Is it thought that they're going to be able to catch up and fulfill the world's demand for PPE? I mean, it's hard, because, I mean, the entire world wants PPE right now. Is that a pipe dream that we're going to be able, if this, if the pandemic continues for several months or a year or whatnot, is, is it a pipe dream, dream for everybody to get the PPE they need? Are there like gurus who talk about whether this is possible?
So what Morgan's hearing is that the second wave of COVID is hitting in China now. So the concern in the purchasing world is they're going to lock down their product again. So as long as we are at the mercy of, you know, a, a foreign manufacturer, I think there's always the, the threat that they're, they're, you know, going to either not be able to meet the need, because the need is exponentially higher now than it was, you know, December of 2019. So, but the, the larger concern of the one that Morgan was, was really voicing this morning, is that China's going to say, whoa, whoa, we got to keep it all for ourselves again. So.
Because they've, I mean, Wuhan has been through the wringer, but the rest of their cities have been mostly unscathed. And so they're, I mean, only a very small portion of their population has even been touched by this. So I see a, a large opportunity for them to need their own PPE, which is terrifying.
Reported.
And, and they, they had, we have had struggles with getting PPE from them previously when they did have, when it was there and before it reached here. Morgan was seeing slowdowns in the receipt of it. And she, I mean, she's been going after materials, though, for quite some time, because we had issues with, with gowns anyway. So she, she's tenacious and then has been going after it. And we're, we're, we're continuing to look at it every day, and that's why these policies, like the universal masking policy, you know, we're, we're waiting and watching and seeing when we absolutely have to do some of these things because of how much PPE they could potentially use. I will tell you, just looking at when we assessed it last week, we have, though, with normal usage, we've got at least two months of some things, and those are like single sizes of gloves. But if you look at, you know, the whole, there's ton, there's tons of, of sizes. But, and we've got three months of masks and three months. So, so we're in a good position, but that's why she's doing things like continuing to look at, what are the other options for gowns, right? Gowns are really hard to reuse. And so are there other industries we can look from? And they're, they're doing it every day. She's like, what about this? What about, should we order some of this? And we're saying, we're saying yes. So we're hopeful that, like Julie said, we're not taking our foot off the gas at all.
So, so in September, October, I'm going to take her departmental financial statement and ask her to explain her overage in PPE and see what she says to me.
Julie, did I hear you, did I hear you write that now they're projecting that there's going to be another huge uptick in, in infections next winter?
The Department of Health is saying that we can expect a surge, and they're saying that it could be 130% of the surge that we saw in King County this year.
And the rationale for that is that it's expected to be coincident with the beginning of flu season?
Is there, do they say anything about suspending the rules for murdering your family? I need, I need a suspension of those rules if they're going to make me stay in the house with them for another year.
I think there's a lot of people that are rethinking, I'd like to work from home.
You know, I, there was an article today I was reading about the uptick in domestic violence. Are we seeing any of that coming through our ER?
Well, I, I don't know about the ER. I will tell you that, we had a conversation at Incident Command the other day about identifying folks that we need to be making phone calls to. And some of that, we talked about, you know, should we be getting lists from the Child Protective Services people, phone calls that we would make, you know, 10 o'clock every morning just to check in with the family and see how things are going? Do we?
You don't need to make a phone call to me. That was a joke. FYI, Carrie.
Right, right out of the gate, public health was very aware, and, and that was a huge concern to law enforcement. They think that, you know, residential burglaries are going to be down because everybody's hanging out at their house, but they were very concerned about domestic violence. So I have not heard statistically that there's been an uptick in the ED, though.
You will be seeing on the communication side, one of the things they're talking about is people being afraid to go to the ER to get sick. And so sometimes they're not paying attention to those heart attacks, stroke signs, appendicitis, things like that. And so that is one of the messages that we're going to be talking about, is reinforcing the safety of coming in when you truly are sick. Because my understanding is that the people that we are seeing, whether it be in the ED side or the hospital side, are pretty sick people right now.
Have mental health visits in the emergency department gone down, or are those steady?
Good questions. Anybody heard any change in that?
DeeDee, can you comment?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Hi, this is DeeDee Lee, the nursing director of the emergency department. Thank you for letting me listen in. And yes, I want to echo what Julie was saying first and, and Michelle. Our volumes are down. We have not seen necessarily an uptick in abusive cases. Behavioral health has been about the same. But we do know that there's added stress out there, and we're anticipating possibly seeing more. We've been in communication with comprehensive healthcare, making sure that they're able to still take care of folks through their telemedicine, making sure they're still able to respond to the ER and safely care for the patients that we have. One of the other areas of concern is probably, you know, now that people are being quarantined, that elderly group that doesn't usually get together for their morning coffees, those, you know, the adult activity center activities. We are seeing some people that are coming in that have been, you know, home and had problems because they're alone, so that, you know, altered mental status or found down. So we're really encouraging people to check in on loved ones. Thank you.
Thanks, DeeDee.
Thank you, DeeDee.
Um, Julie or Carrie Barr, my other, my last question I had was telemedicine. What's, how many providers are actually doing telemedicine?
That's a Carrie Barr.
Yeah, so we have actually, as of, gosh, last, I think the latter part of last week, we had about 716 telehealth visits. And what has been really fascinating to me is that the leading clinic of those telehealth visits has been internal medicine. So this is a demographic in which we felt as though we really wouldn't have a lot of traction with, but they've embraced it. And it, you know, the, our, I have to just give a shout out to our patient service representatives and our MAs. They spend a lot of time talking to the patients and walking them through that technology, but once they're in, they're in. And, and it's going slicker than some of the Zoom meetings that I've had. So.
Mute.
Yeah, that's great. But reimbursement for those is not very good.
Yeah.
No, $92 is the amount that they're giving, that they're reimbursing. So to put that into perspective, so at internal medicine, our, our encounter rate is $240 and some change. And now we're getting $92.
No, I would, we are supposed to get $92. We haven't seen dime one virtual visits yet, but.
Is that for $92 flat, whether it's just a, a quick three-minute versus, hey, I've got this problem, it's 25 minutes later, and, and they're still talking to the patient? It's the same?
Yep, same thing.
Yeah. Okay. Not a long term.
Well, I, you know, really, my concern is the reimbursement. It needs to be close to that encounter rate, because the encounter rate is defined its cost. So we are getting paid less than our cost for that. But likewise, I'm really concerned that the plans are going to come out and staff these Amazon-like warehouses in low-wage states full of providers and who are answering the phone all day long, and you just defined rural access as a warehouse in South Dakota full of docs. So I really think there's some advocacy that we're going to need to, to pay close attention to as we emerge from this.
You know, I can speak from a experience back in February. I had a tele visit with one of my providers, and the insurance company wouldn't pay for it. And I questioned them. They said, well, we would pay for the teleproviders that we have, but they're not one of our teleproviders, so we wouldn't pay for it during that month. But now they have to pay for it because there's been some changes federally, but that's slowly going to go back again. So you're concerned about the Amazon locking up all these people into a building and pushing all the providers to that is a concern that we'll have to keep an eye on.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Julie, do you want to go over some of the other projects in the field?
You know, I would just say, we looked up a couple of weeks ago and said, we really need to prepare. We were going gangbusters. We had a number of new projects, new service lines. We were working on patient-centered medical homes and ACO. We need to kind of step back. We need to do something besides COVID and look to the future and look to that strategy that we have of growth. But we also need to be mindful of how much bandwidth we have. So there, we're sifting through these projects, saying, which of these do we think we need to continue to tend to? I think service line growth, growing our specialty services. We are going to continue to do that work. I talked a little bit today about maybe stepping away from the ACO work that we're doing and saw a lot of nods around the, the Incident Command. We, A, we don't think CMS is going to have a clue how to deal with ACO calculations in 2021 coming out of this mess. But we need to make sure not to burn people out on sort of trial projects. Are there any, Dr. Martin, do you want to talk about some of the providers we have starting and?
Sure. Christopher Petty is a general surgeon who joined us at the beginning of the month. I've known Dr. Petty for probably close to 20 years. When I was in primary care practice over in Puget Sound, he was my go-to surgeon. So I'm delighted to have him here. Dr. Jensen joined us in radiology, as you heard. We have a pediatrician under contract, Dr. Debrichay Share, who has been practicing in Kewala. His mom is one of our longstanding volunteers, so he'll fit in. We have an orthopa that has accepted an offer, and another one that is waiting until he can make a site visit to decide if he wants to move to Ellensburg, but is very interested about coming back to Washington, but just wants to be able to walk around in the community before he knows if this is where he wants to move. We're also working with a vascular surgeon that is interested in doing cases here. We have been approached by an internist, and we're exploring that. We're also talking to another pediatrician. So I don't know if it's just the docs are home on the internet looking for opportunities, but recruiting seems to be going quite well right now.
Great.
Carrie, I know, continues to work with Dr. Azrael on addiction medicine and chugging along on patient-centered medical homes, probably might not meet all the targets that we were looking for through some of the Greater Columbia work we were doing. But I don't think they'll be surprised to hear that we were derailed in some of that work.
And we're also looking at exploring the possibility of bringing pain management And we're also looking at exploring the possibility of bringing pain management to town and looking at how we can expand specialty services.
Any other questions? Okay. Yeah, anything, Julie?
You know, I, I really don't have anything except to say that you, and I, I'm not just blowing smoke here. You have an extraordinary staff working here. And the character, the machine that has kicked in that defines KVH has been pretty extraordinary, pretty amazing. And I don't, you know, we went to them and asked them to cut their salaries and nobody, I, it's not that I drive my car to work, but nobody kept the tires on anybody's car that I'm aware of. It's just an extraordinary team.
Yeah, I totally agree. I mean, I think there's a sense in the community of, you know, really supporting healthcare folks right now. The 500 people, you know, listening into the presentation is like huge. So there's great interest and a lot of uncertainty, so.
Everybody buying us meals. And we're all going to be fat little things by the time this is all done. Shoemaker bought 250 meals, I think it was, from Ellensburg Pasta Company yesterday to serve the staff and the mule and just all the restaurants have been buying dinner, wanting, red pickle. People want to know how they can support the staff. It's been amazing.
That's fantastic.
Did I miss anything, guys?
I think you got it all.
All right.
So do we, yeah, do we have a executive session?
You know, I, without going into executive session, I will just say that we had the conversation about real estate last time and we continue to work on it, so.
Julie, one last thing. Do we need to do anything regarding that, the discussion we had the other day about your salary? Do we need to do anything for?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, yes, thank you for remembering that. You don't actually have to. We, we are using the emails, but I would appreciate it if, for the record, the board will affirm that they have all approved my reduction of 20% from April 26th through July 18th.
Okay. I think, and I, I think we all did that except for I replied on a separate email.
You did. And if, Mandy will just record, you know, in the minutes that we did that by email and it was unanimous, that the board authorized changing my rate of pay for six pay periods. Then it doesn't take a resolution or a motion or anything. I'd just like the record to reflect, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for remembering that.
Yeah, really appreciate, you know, Julie and the senior leadership and really the anticipating what's going to happen down the road. Because scary times now, but financially, it'll take a while to restart the machine. And what that really looks like, I don't know if anybody knows yet. So trying to cover all our bases, I think senior leadership and Julie's doing a great job. Look at all different angles.
Thank you. Well, the electronic forum, what was it called? It sucks, it sucks to be a hospital, but if you have to be a hospital, be KVH.
I thought that was clever.
That sounds like a good T-shirt.
Can we get T-shirts with that on it? I mean, it'd work.
No, but...
Maybe it's all funded, not organization funded.
There you go.
Yeah, you just hit it right there. We can design it to sort of know how you want to pay for it.
That's it.
Okay, uh, so any other comments from the board before we adjourn?
Nope, just Mandy, we, just let us know how you want us to sign that stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
You.
Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you all very much.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Do you need to adjourn, Bob?
Huh?
You need to adjourn?
Meetings adjourn.
Okay, cool.
All right, see you guys later.
Good one, everyone.